Welcome to Inside Politics, the weekly podcast that delves into a couple of things you need to know about San Antonio politics. I'm Greg Jefferson, Metro Editor of the San Antonio Express News. I'm joined today by City Hall reporter Megan Rodriguez.
Hello.
And our special guest today, the besties, District Two Councilman, Jalen Micky Rodriguez, District Ten Councilman, Mark White.
I've been tricked.
Welcome. Oh, I mean, okay, so I can't imagine a pair of council members who differ more politically, but yet you, you seem to have formed a friendship kind of behind the scenes. I don't know that it plays out that much on, on the dais. So I'm curious how, tell me how, how your relationship kind of congealed. Like, how did it come together?
Yeah, I'll tell you, after he got elected, I-
This is two years ago.
Two years ago. Wanted, oh my God, it's been two years. I like to meet with as many council members as possible, all of them if, if I can and if they'll allow. And he was really quick and down, let's get, you know, let's go meet up at the spot. We had a conversation and I think we realized, of course, we already knew we weren't going to agree too much on issues. We identified some areas where we think we could, very much infrastructure, infrastructure, some other things, I'm sure. But I think what we also realize is that in politics, there's a lot of niceties and there's, it's not always, everything's not real. Every relationship isn't real and genuine, and it's often based on what can someone gain from the other. And I think we realized that, you know, we don't gain anything from being friends with one another. So that's as genuine as it can get.
Yeah. So in, in other words, you don't see a lot of commonalities between your east side district and your northeast side district. Like, have you worked together on, on ordinance?
Yeah, well, well, I'll start by saying, you're right. How you introduced this, there are no two humans probably more different politically and in a lot of ways.
Yeah.
But we did, we bonded over infrastructure. So when you ask about commonalities-
We bonded over, oh, that's amazing. How many rom coms started with that?
Not too many. But yeah, I mean, 22% of the roads in this city are in poor failing condition and a lot of them are in his district and a lot of them are in the middle of my district. And so to me, that's what politics or public service should be, should be all about, right? We are not going to agree on maybe 90% of issues, but there is some percentage of the work that we do where we absolutely can find common ground. Infrastructure is most certainly one of them. And then, of course, my very first CCR when I was on council was teaming up with the councilman on the construction mitigation fund to help businesses that have been negatively impacted by city construction going on outside their front door. So-
Was that intentional? Like, did you, did you want your first big move on council to be-
No.
With kind of, in some, like, really big bipartisan state?
It was born out of that first conversation that we had. And nobody can drive around this city and not see construction taking place everywhere. And so it was sort of a, it was hurting businesses in District Two, it was hurting businesses in District Ten, and we said, let's do something about it.
That policy proposal kind of just solidified these grant funds that go out to businesses whenever there's long-term city-run construction projects. But have y'all had any other collaborations since then? I can't remember CCRs that I've seen both of your names on, which CCRs are council consideration requests, essentially the first step to policy proposal in the city.
Well, I'll tell you, the, the next thing that immediately jumps to my head that we teamed up on was the fire contract.
Oh, yeah.
And the situation with, you know, our city attorney and how the councilman and I, along with a few others, were really pressing for more transparency from our city staff. And we pushed hard to make sure our firefighters got, got the contract that they deserved. So, so that was a second area. We've also-
Was that actually effective? By the way, I mean, to go back to that, I mean, you wanted more information, you know, in executive session briefings from Andy Segovia and others who were actually involved in negotiating the contract with the fire union. You felt like you just weren't getting enough. Did you, did that ever really change and did it have any bearing on, on the final contract?
Yeah, we were basically at that point being told we were no longer going to be participating in fire contract discussions. We were not going to have executive sessions, no matter how many of us asked for it, no matter how the conversations were going. We were told that that was not going to happen. And immediately after we filed the, the three signature, five signature memo, we got our executive session and we got to continue having discussions. And it was, we did start to see changes. And I think that holding city staff's feet to the fire a little bit helped push it in that direction, definitely expedited it.
Now, when you first started talking with one another, and I would imagine it was probably before you're swearing in, you probably met, I'm guessing, maybe before, before then, what kind of, kind of preconceptions did you have? Let's start with you. Like, what, what were you expecting from this guy?
I'll tell you-
Because, I mean, it's like, look, I mean, this is the northeast side, it's a pretty conservative district. And, you know, like, I, except for maybe Chip Haas, everybody else representing that has been a Republican, conservative Republican at that. East side, not so much. So what, what was in your head when you-
I want, man, I don't want to get in trouble.
No, what else?
Don't put filters on yourself. Here's what I'll say, here's what I'll say. I had gotten used to the former District Ten Council, Councilman Clayton Perry. And what I feel like I experienced my first two years while he was on council was someone who had kind of accepted that things weren't going to change. He wasn't going to, you know, be able to change city policy too overwhelmingly. Like, the big thing he was fighting for, the homestay exemption, that was something that city staff was moving towards anyway. But you get, you, you got used to him letting you know what his questions were going to be before he got on the dais. He would, you know, receive the answer. He's like, hey, well, I'm going to say this anyway. You can rebut it if you want to. And so you got used to this sort of, I don't know, I don't want to say, hmm, I feel like, no, when he got elected, I was like, man, this guy is younger, not young, but younger, no, that's funny. He's younger and he has-
We determined he's in his mid-50s.
He has, you know, in the Republican Party that is extremely young. He has a long political future ahead of him if he wants it. And he's going to be fighting and he's going to have to, if he ever wants to run for a primary seat, he's going to have to be thinking that way. That, that was a worry of mine, right? Is that it's going to be a bigger show, but it's going to be somebody who wants it and somebody who wants to fight and has way more energy. And I'm like, man, I'm used, you know, I'm used to being the one with energy.
It's interesting to, that you, part of your thinking was that eventually he's going to be running in a party primary. So, so for some seat other than a city council seat, which is a nonpartisan race, like state rep, state senator, something like that. So that was kind of your approach. You thought of him as a Republican, he was-
But, but-
I mean, is there a but?
But that was based solely on, you know, what I had read about him, the things that had been said. And he had previously run for, you know, in a primary. And so just could see that. If he wants a future, then he, you know, he has to use city council as an opportunity to, to move in that direction or to prove himself. And so I was very worried about, you know, this guy coming in with all this energy in a complete opposite direction of where I'm coming and where I'm going.
Oh, there is no but.
I mean, kinda. There was a but without the but.
I think you are not that entirely.
Yeah.
An ambition machine.
Yeah. So, so, so first of all, just to set the record straight, that was not why I ran for city council. I'm here, as I tell my colleagues every day, is to make the citizens' lives better on a daily basis. That's what I believe city council is all about. That's what I ran. That's what I'm going to keep doing for the next four years.
Exactly what I said.
But, but I had preconceived notions.
It's the beginning of the end for you.
I had preconceived notions, because what, what happens is, most of the time, you know, people, you know, look at somebody and, and they just catch the soundbites on, on TV or read them in the newspaper. And they say, oh, well, well, this is, you know, crazy, unreasonable guy, way, way, way progressive, and there's never going to be a chance that we're ever going to be able to work on anything. Now, does he have all these crazy ideas? A lot of them, for sure he does. But, but I'll tell you this, while I know we're not going to agree on 90, 95% of things, this guy cares about his district. He, he fights for the residents of District Two on a daily basis. And he truly believes the things that he's pushing are the best for San Antonio. And now, I may vehemently disagree with, with a lot of those, but, but he believes it.
Right.
And he fights for his people and I respect that. And so we've sort of agreed that, hey, there's going to be some, we agree to disagree. He knows it's not worth bringing me some of the CCRs. He wants to-
I still take everyone to you.
He wants to pass around, but we're going to find common areas where we can, because I think that's what the citizens expect us to do.
In the most polite way. He just called me a delusional. And I would say the same for you, my friend.
Like, in your own polite way, you took some shots at him. We'll, we'll allow all of that. Do you think the kind of relationship you've developed, is that possible? Say if you transplanted, transplanted it to, say, the Texas Legislature, could that happen in the Texas Senate or Texas House? Or is it because city council is a nonpartisan body that it's, it's a little easier to kind of get along with your colleagues?
I think it should translate to the Texas Legislature, to what goes on in Washington, DC, and frankly, to, to all of humanity, right? People can have differing beliefs and disagree, but you can do it respectfully. And I think that's, that's what we've done. I forgot what it was the other day on Public Safety Committee. We were having a back and forth, really disagreed with him. And I know he disagreed with me, but we had a smile on his face.
Was it about the hiring of police officers? That wouldn't be crazy to think that might be it.
But, but why-
It reads way more dramatically than it actually was.
Yeah. Why can't people get along and just understand there's going to be differences of opinion on things? I mean, I don't, I don't see why that can't be.
I'll tell you, I think a part of the reason, and I think it, on a body like city council, it lends itself to stronger relationships, because there's only so many of you, you do have to collaborate. And it's much more reasonable to say, you know, I can get six votes versus, you know, you're in a Texas legislator, legislature, and it's so many more people from across the state. They're not your neighbor. I think Mark lives the closest to me out of all the council members. That's not, that's not the same when you're at the state and you're also talking about issues that are, you know, you're talking about attacks on communities, you're talking about ways of life, you're talking about people. And, and it's so much more of a scary way, I think, at the state, that I don't know that it's quite the same as it is on the council.
And let me tell you one, one area it's beneficial. And I just thought about this. And maybe it's the maddest I've ever been at you. It, it was about, it was about six months in, I think, to my term on council. And we had been developing the friendship. And then there was one day on the dais where he said something that almost implied like,
Oh, I said, go ahead and do your little dance.
Your prejudice against this, that, or the other, whatever it was. And I can't tell you, I was ticked off that day. And the reason being is that I think when you form relationships with people, they get to know you, they get to understand you. We built the friendship. And he knows now.
So you felt hurt and misunderstood?
Well, he, I, I felt like he should have known that day, that whatever point I was-
I know exactly what vote it was. But what were you talking about?
It wasn't born out of prejudice or anything, it's just a difference of opinion.
It was establishment of a permanent LGBTQ advisory commission.
Okay.
Was that what it was?
And you, and so in my, so the way I felt about it, right, is that we're having a conversation, it's largely administrative. We're making sure that the next mayor can't get rid of this commission. It's, it has to be eliminated by ordinance of the, of the council. And to me, when, the reason I think you gave was that, you know, we already have too much bureaucracy, we already have too many boards and commissions, some people aren't even filling their boards and commission seats up.
And I remember you had statistics on how many were unfilled at that time as well that you were kind of-
So it was, why create a new one? And it wasn't creating a new one, it was creating a, to me, it felt like a signal to people. If you, people don't need to know why you voted no. All they know is that you voted no. And so to me, that was a-
Yeah. And what happened there is, is he made his comments and I, and I, and I, it might have been during the meeting. And I said to him after, or during, I said, I think that's BS. You know me by now. You know, I don't care if anybody's gay or straight, whatever. I just, I'm trying to do the best I can on each particular issue. And that's when you asked me though, you said, hey, I'd really appreciate if there wasn't a, you know, I don't want there to be a no vote on this, right? And that's, and that's why I said, well, I'm not voting for a new board or commission, because it is absolutely ridiculous. We have 95, 100, and half of them don't meet, and it's a waste of time and city money. But I did end up abstaining, abstaining on the vote. But my point is, I think close relationships can help you move past some of the rhetoric that, that you see out there, right? So much, so many times on the left, I feel like they look at people on the right and they disagree with their, with their position. And they, but they say it's because they're racist or because they're homophobic or whatever, whatever the reason is, when actually, no, there's very, very legitimate reasons for the positions that some of us have. And so I think that good relationships can help move people past some of that and actually look at the issue rather than some of the noise.
Right. Tell me about, away from City Hall, do you spend time together? Do you meet for dinner, go out for drinks? Like, what's, what's the state of your relationship?
Well, he hasn't been able to drink for a while, so.
Well.
We get lunch, we get dinner.
See, it's only because he's like friends, but I love it. Get away with that.
Your obstruction of highway.
Obstruction of highway, thank you.
Stemming from your-
We're moving on, we're moving on.
You brought it up. I'm trying to elucidate for, for our listeners, what we're referring to. Talking about the drunk driving case. Go ahead.
Which, of course, is, is not a humorous incident at all, and, and something that the public needs to very, very much take seriously, because there's a lot of lives that are negatively affected by that every single year. And, you know, thankfully, that's now, and now in my past. But, but it's something that I think the public needs to remain vigilant of, and nobody should ever, you know, have anything to drink and get behind the wheel of a car. But that said, to your question, we see each other every, every now and again. We socialize with, with some of our, some of our colleagues. And, you know, I wouldn't say it's, it's, it's every week, but, you know, at least every few weeks, we'll see each other.
Yeah. Now, how much time do you spend talking about who's going to be the next mayor? Because I know you have disagreements on that.
We have a very strong disagreement on that. And as I was saying before we got in here, I think he's a little bit nervous because-
Because I disagree.
Folks listening, Mark White has endorsed Rolando Pablo's and Jalen Micky Rodriguez has endorsed Gina Ortiz Jones, who are on the complete opposite sides of the political spectrum.
Do you spend any time arguing?
Poking fun at each other more so. I think we're both confident in our candidate. I think the work that Gina's done has spoken for itself. And I'm pretty positive she's going to pull ahead in the, in the runoff.
You know, hey, we're, we're sitting in a building, okay, that just endorsed Rolando Pablo's for mayor.
Didn't we? I don't know, because that's-
Never did I think that I would see the day that the Express News did that.
It was the editorial board, which-
Yeah, I was gonna say, let me say, let me say, I'm an ambassador from the news side. I have nothing to do, neither one of us have anything to do with the editorial board, which made that decision.
Yeah.
But, but let's be serious about it first.
Yeah, yeah. They also endorse people that, I think they endorsed Ivy Taylor when Ron ran the first time.
Believe they did.
There, I, I've met with, with Gina Ortiz Jones a couple of times, really enjoyed, enjoyed my, my meetings with her. And for me, though, it's just, I look at the person, don't worry about political parties or any of it. Who's the most qualified to be running the city of San Antonio? Who's going to take San Antonio where it needs to go in the next four years? Who's going to best position us to get new businesses, new, new jobs here in the city? And it's really, really clear to me that Rolando Pablo should be the next mayor.
Yeah. What's your relationship with Pablo's? I mean, I assume you knew him from before.
I, I, I've known him a little while. He is just a tremendously nice person. He's an extremely smart person.
How'd you get to know him?
We, I don't know, we linked up. Somebody introduced us. And so we've had a lot of time to talk about city issues and where he believes the city should go. And I think he's, he's more than qualified to do it. He's collaborative, which you're going to like. And he's focused on infrastructure and public safety and all the right things.
Now, I-
Someone could be nice, but if, if the way that the campaign has gone about and the ads and the attacks that have been, if that's indicative of the way he would serve as mayor, I'm a bit concerned.
I'm assuming some of the ads you're referring to, there have been several attack ads against Gina Ortiz Jones at, at this point, just kind of calling her out for, I think some of them call her out for not interviewing with reporters on election night. Some of them are calling her out for having her phone out during a debate recently.
And then saying she would defund the police. And it's, that's, at this point, at this point, like-
Yeah. At the same token, why is, why is Gina talking about abortion and vouchers when it comes to Rolando, when that has nothing to do with what we do at City Hall?
Let me, okay, let me, let me stop you there. So I'll just treat you as a Rolando Pablo's surrogate here, because I've got, I've had this concern. And I'm going to do the same with you, with Gina Ortiz Jones. So with Pablo's, I mean, imagine what happens when you have in, you know, a Republican Latino who's mayor of the seventh largest city in the country, just two hours from the border. Like, my concern is, he would be on Fox News every week. You know, he would be sucked up into this kind of national right-wing media sphere. He would be, you know, he would be called on by Greg Abbott, President Trump, to make all kinds of appearances and maybe take positions on, you know, I'm thinking like criminality among illegal immigrants, that's not really in keeping with where we're at in San Antonio. Like, how much of a, like, is that, is that a legitimate concern I've got or no? And if not, tell me why not?
So first of all, I would tell you that where, where were we having this conversation over the last two years, when our current mayor was on CNN and in Washington DC and wherever Joe Biden was, and then Kamala Harris was the, the mayor?
I think that's a false equivalent. I don't, I don't, I don't see a difference.
I see it very similarly. But, so, so, so I think we, we've just seen that over, over the last two years, in my opinion. But, but to answer your question, listen, Rolando, and I know this from speaking to him, he's not focused on anything other than making San Antonio the very best city that it can, it can be. Now, the fact that he does have relationships at the state level and at the federal level is going to be extremely beneficial for our city, to make sure that San Antonio not just gets its fair share from those levels of government, but even more than its fair share. So I take the relationships that he has at those levels as a big, big positive for his candidacy. I do not think he's going to be distracted by, by, by anything else, because there's so much to do here at the city. And I know that's what he's focused on.
If he wins, we'll check in in six months. Let's see how that goes. Now, I mean, you could make the, and he, he kind of did make, make the same argument when it comes to Gina Ortiz Jones. I mean, it is true that Ron Nirenberg spent a lot of time at the Biden White House. He was kind of seen as kind of a rising star in the Democratic Party, did a lot of traveling outside.
He still is seen as these things, right?
Well, is he? I don't know. Is he? Maybe. We'll see. I mean, the next couple of years, I guess, will tell. If he runs against what? Ted Cruz, maybe, who knows? Which is, we, we hear that's what he's gearing up for. Whatever. With Gina Ortiz Jones, you can make the same argument that, that we are going to, oh, am I wrong about that?
No, we are just silence.
Okay. I mean, so she is talking about abortion in a mayor's race. Why is that? I mean, it does, it does seem like, it does seem like a very red meat issue to be talking about in a mayor's race, where the leverage you have to address access to abortion are pretty small.
I do feel like abortion came up this mayoral race a lot and in many city council races, because of the reproductive justice fund. People did want to know, where would you vote on this issue? And so I think it just lent itself to transition to talk about candidates who, candidates who would say, you know, no, I wouldn't vote, vote for this fund, still wanted to find some way to affirm that they believe in a woman's right to choose. And so I think it just became a topic throughout the entire mayor's race, right? But then you also have, you're responding to constituents and potential voters for concerns that they have at their door. When you get to the door, they're not always going to say, oh, you're the, you're running for mayor, I'm only going to talk about infrastructure and these, I'm talking about the things that, that I'm seeing on, I'm talking about everything. I want to know, where do you stand on this? And I think people do realize that when they cast their vote for a city council person or for a mayor, they ask every, every time they ask, are you a Democrat or a Republican? They want to know your views on, if you do disagree with them on something, they want to know what your views are.
We, we heard that a lot in the mayor's race before May 3rd, that, you know, we heard from campaign managers that at the door, yeah, voters wanted to know, is this person a Republican or a Democrat? Because with so many people in the race, it was just an easy way to kind of define a candidate. But are you saying that, that, that's true even in smaller races, in council races?
Yes. And it's been the case. And when I first ran, that would be, that's-
So like, just like, you could have, you know, just a handful of candidates, they're going to want to know, are you a Democrat, you're a Republican?
Yeah. Because sometimes, most of the time, most of the time, campaigns aren't knocking on doors. And so if they do get to talk to somebody for a campaign, they want to know, if this person's, you know, aligned with my values, I'll give them that platform.
Yeah.
A, a lot of people do want to know that, because they haven't fully researched the candidates. And so the quickest way to know whether or not you align with the values or not is whether you're an R or a D. I will push back though, because reproductive justice fund was not about, was not about whether or not you believe in a woman's right to choose or not. Because let's remember, we had, we have, we had at least one pro-choice female on the city council who was on my side of this argument. That issue was about whether or not city tax dollars should be used to send women out of state for abortion services. And it's still my belief that at least 70% of this city would say, no, that's not how our tax dollars should be spent.
Which is why I just said the candidates running for mayor and other seats wanted to affirm that they still believed that, you know, in the right to choose, despite the fact that they wouldn't support the reproductive justice fund.
To remind folks what the reproductive justice fund is also, it's a 500, it started off as a $500,000 fund that was kind of, many of the council members wanted it to go toward helping women get out of state, travel out of state. It would be for the travel costs, not the actual abortion costs. But ultimately, those $500,000 did not go to those purposes, went to other reproductive healthcare needs. But there's this debate right now that people are probably asking about, like, how y'all will vote, because there's $100,000 that could potentially be added for more specifically, the travel purpose. But I, I'm curious, is it any more ramped up this year? Y'all are saying both times, like, the times that you have run before, that everyone's always asking you about Republican or Democrat, has it been any more, so this year, now that we have a mayor's race on the ballot, where maybe that's potentially more top of mind, because you have these mayoral candidates kind of punching at each other on these more partisan issues?
I, I got, I feel like it was maybe a little more ramped up than it was two years ago. I personally got yelled at at the polls over, you know, about some of the things that President Trump has been doing from the White House. And I had to explain to people that while I, while I support President Trump, and I think he's doing overwhelmingly a really good job, that this, it's outside of city council purview, you know, the tariffs and the things like that. But I had people that, that wanted to talk to me about that at the polls. And again, people ask me all the time, what are the biggest issues that we have down at City Hall? And I tell them consistently that one of the two or three biggest issues we have is the failure of our council to stay focused on what city issues really are, right? It's, to me, it's about our citizens' day-to-day lives, improving their day-to-day quality of life. It's public safety, it's infrastructure, et cetera. And some of these issues, at least in my opinion, the reproductive justice fund issue, again, that's outside.
Seems skeptical.
Yeah.
Skeptical faces. The consensus is elsewhere. Our, the reality is, we have to meet our constituents' needs where they are. And so that sometimes means getting into things that in 1962, we wouldn't have done. Would we have done a lot of the social programs that we have? Would we have an insulin cost share program? Would we be doing, going door to door with resources so that people, you know, have leashes and have pedal on our education behavior? Would we be doing all of that? No. As time evolves, so does the role of your government.
Yeah, but Greg, Megan, look, you've been, you've been- We do a survey every year of what the citizens' priorities are. You guys should do an ORR for all the, well, I can't, I'm suggesting this, but you should do an ORR for, for all of the, what our constituents are calling and asking us for and talking to us about. And what you're going to see is it's all about street sidewalks, drainage, code enforcement, public safety. That's 95% of what our citizens are calling us about, not these other things.
My friend, in District Ten, maybe that's the case. So in, in, when you get your 311 data and it's separated by department, that might absolutely be it. But what, what you're not getting are the people who are calling our offices, asking for any amount of help that they can get to prevent them from being evicted. They're, you know, someone's mom is going to be deported. We are being asked, and we're being asked for things that are really deep into people's lives in a way that I don't, maybe it's not the case for you. Maybe that's not what you get at your office. But a lot of us do. We are a city that is impoverished, that is in need. And when you live in, still, and you're thinking about economic development, plug for Gina, right? She understands that human capital, human, human wellbeing, safe, healthy kids, safe, healthy families, like, that's how you succeed as a city. And you don't get that all the time, just by focusing on infrastructure.
This is why, this is why, this is why he's good at what he does, because he can eloquently-
Okay. So with, just to, just to- Okay, so just to, just to nose our way back to the, to the mayor's race just really quick. So this, I think this is the most partisan mayor's race I've seen since arriving in San Antonio in 2000. Hands down. And I think that Rolando Pablo is, you know, particularly ahead of the May 3rd election, was focusing on a hardcore of Republican voters, mostly in districts eight, nine, and 10. And I think Gina Ortiz Jones was doing the same thing with Democratic voters. And I don't think in the runoff that their strategy has changed that much. I think they're probably each trying to kind of broaden their base a bit, but they're, they're tending to their base. And this, to an extent, I've just not seen in a city race before. Is this going to affect whoever wins the mayor's office? Is partisanship going to be a bigger factor in city council going forward?
For me, absolutely not. Regardless of who wins the mayor's race, I'm ready to work with either of them for, for the betterment of San Antonio. How the rest of my colleagues feel, I, I don't know. But, but I know that just from the people that we know will be on city council, we've got good working relationships with all of them. And so regardless of who's sitting, sitting in the mayor's seat, the people of San Antonio want us to work together to solve the problems of the city. And that's what I'm going to do.
I will say, I think there is focus a little bit on this being like nonpartisan council, nonpartisancy. It's because we don't have primaries. It's always been about, especially in the mayor's race. I, I would challenge, I think the first time Brock House ran against Ron, I think it was very partisan in nature. And I feel like it's always been, you know, who's going to get the north side, which means what? And who's going to get the east, west, and south side and downtown? Who's going to get there? And that means what? And so it's always been like this. It's just right now, it's very explicit and you have people who have served in, in appointed capacities for partisan officials that it just, it lends itself to be more outward.
It's kind of more nakedly happening. It's just kind of out in the open. But I mean, that, that too could affect the way you kind of do politics at city hall. I mean, if it's, if it's super explicit, you know, that, that could mean that, you know, debate at council gets a little, gets a little harder edge, gets a little more partisan.
And I'll tell you how else you'll know if it's happening. The three signature memo. I, I, it's my belief that you're going to, if partisan politics get, get too deep into city hall and that there's a faction of council that, that doesn't, that doesn't like what they're seeing or doesn't like what, what they, things aren't getting on the agenda that they want, you're going to see a lot more three signature memos over the coming years. That's going to create a lot of conflict.
I could see that.
Which those are the memos that basically force meetings and force topics onto an agenda.
Yeah, and it seems like we've seen a number of those under Ron Nirenberg. Is it for the same reason? Do you feel like?
How many? Well, you, you saw the one, Manny and you guys tried the one on the Palestinian issue, right?
Calling for a ceasefire, yes.
Calling for the ceasefire, we saw that one. We, we did the one on the issue with, on fire and the city attorney.
Something about Greenway Trails was at one point.
So I, since I've been there, I've only, and, and the ceasefire one never actually made it to council because Manny, Manny pulled it back, but, but I don't.
I was going to say something.
I don't know how many have actually, and actually in the city attorney one as well, that was able to be diffused before having the meeting. So I don't know that a three signature memo has ever resulted in a council meeting since I've been on council.
Did you want to add something?
No, I don't, I don't think so either. No, I don't, I don't think so either. I think they're usually, they're definitely a tool. Yeah. It depends, I don't know, I don't know, actually. I'm trying to think, how would we use that? If Rolando Pablo's were to get elected.
This is what's going to happen.
Or Gina, I mean.
If he has three people, which he's hoping to. If Rolando Pablo's gets elected and really leans heavily into partisanship and, you know, we're not going to. It would be a change, of course. I don't want to put, I don't want to manifest something with negative.
Before we move on, let's, let's kind of look at how your council colleagues who ran for mayor did, which was not very well on election day. So you had four, four sitting council members running for mayor and Clayton Perry, who had just really, you replaced him on council. So he'd been out of office less than two years. Not a one of them could crack 10%.
That's what Manu Dranarochi Garcia came pretty close with.
She did, but she didn't. But I mean, yeah, she didn't crack 10%. So, okay. It's true that you had three outsiders, including Beto Altimorano, who were pumping a lot of money into their, into their race. They were getting a lot of outside money. And you had two of them, Jones and Pablo's, who had strong party identification. Was there any other factor at play here in how badly the, the sitting council members did the mayor's race? Or is it, is it simply that partisanship and money?
No, it's money. It was, it was the money. I think everyone struggled, well, except for Mark. Everyone struggled, Mark and Suck.
I gotta say, you're a really good fundraiser. You've got a bazillion dollars for a council.
People appreciate the work we're doing, Greg. I'm glad, I'm glad that you brought this question. Were you finished?
No, no, no.
Even in it, so if we're used to a mayoral race being a million, people said it was going to cost a million dollars for someone to win the seat. No, all of them combined didn't do, do that for most of the race. And so they didn't, there's no way that they reached very many constituents at all, their voters. They didn't, they didn't, they didn't have the campaigns to do that. They turned out the people they could. If you only have 30, 40, $50,000, that's a council race. So you might get the amount of votes that you would get at a council race.
That's true, but I mean, part of, you know, one of the, one of the reasons San Antonio has a history of electing city council members is because they make a name for themselves on council. So it's true, they represent one district, but they're generally pretty well-known throughout the city. I mean, no, you know, I'm overstating.
No, okay. I don't think.
You're hoping for that for your mayor's run.
Don't do that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I do think there's something else at play. Manny, John, Adriana, Melissa, extremely talented, smart. A great Clayton, great, great people have done so much on city council, so much for the city. All of them worthy of being mayor and would have done a great job. I think there's a dissatisfaction in this city with what's going on down at city hall.
That is so simple, that's such a simple take.
And, and, and that's why the citizens have, have, one of the reasons, because of course, money, money is a, is a huge factor in these races. But, but the citizens are just dissatisfied with what's going on. And he'll disagree with me, but when you see things like ceasefire resolutions, when you see things like reproductive justice funds, when you see city council spending money and doing things that do not relate to people's day-to-day lives, the citizens get tipped off.
Like a Project Mark?
I was going to say, I, I was going to say, and I meant to say it on the dais the other day. Why in the hell, can I say hell on this?
You can say much worse.
Why in the hell would the citizens of San Antonio want to trust us, right? With more money to go do this Project Marvel? If they look at city hall and they see us spending money on things like, like the reproductive justice fund, which by the way, W OAI had a wastewater segment that says now the total on what we've spent on this thing is more than a million dollars. Why would they want to? So I think the answer to your question is, yes, it's about money and of course it's about name ID. But it's also about the citizens don't see a city government that's focused on their day-to-day lives. They don't see a city government that is looking to the future in, in bringing more prosperity to their lives, to this city. And that's why they voted the way they did.
If you clearly. If Ron ran, if Ron ran again, he would have won. If he was able to, he would have won. We all, most of, most of us as incumbents all but one, one-handedly on election day. I don't think it's a dissatisfaction with city council. Sure, you can make, you can make that, that, but the reality is that none of the council members had money. Manny, I think if he, it was the last minute that he put money in, if he had been doing a solid campaign from the jump with that money, he would have been in the runoff.
Yeah, but, but these, I mean, Melissa did so much while, while she was on city council. Manny, Manny, the same, right? John, John in District Nine, the most votes of all come from, from District Nine. He always wins overwhelmingly, right? And Adriana too, has, has, has a big following. But, but none of them were able to get close in the end. Because I think when people are looking at who's going to lead the city to be in the top spot, right? The top spot is a little different than the individual council races. Because the top spot, you're really looking at, okay, what direction do I see this city going? Like, who do I really believe is going to take the city where, where I believe it, it should go? And I think, I think most people say, hey, you know, as I always say, the city is doing fine. Like, it's, it's doing okay, but we could be doing so much better. And, and so I think that's part of what went into people's votes.
Do either of y'all have any concerns though about the fact that we now have city hall outsiders who are going to be running the city or somebody who, I guess, is there a concern of what that would mean as far as like a learning curve?
We might have the same concern.
Go, go.
Finally. As a council member, especially, and I think you experienced this, you know, first getting elected. I had experienced it for my first two years, is there's a certain way, there's, I don't want to call them games, right? But games that leadership play, that city leadership will play. And they, they would disagree with you. It feel, it feels like there's certain methods, there's things that you have to get used to as a council member to realize who's steering what ships.
He's 100% right. And I told, I said it the other week, neither of these people have any idea what it's really like to work down at city hall on this city council and with the city staff. I just came from municipal utilities committee meeting where we got the slides for today's presentation.
Like three minutes before?
At 7:04 PM last night before this morning's. I'm with you.
That feels. It, it seems intentional.
Dealing with city. And let me say, and you'll agree with me, our city staff is great. They want to.
Except when they.
They want to do right by the city. I think Eric Walsh just does a really good job, as do his top lieutenants and, and the majority of our city staff. But getting information, getting things to move, getting information timely so that we can do what we're supposed to be doing, which is analyzing the information and then making policy decisions is really, really tough. And I hope that whoever the next mayor is will lean on city staff to, to make that process better.
Especially because I think a part of it, especially for us, you know, especially my first, my first term. I filed a bunch of CCRs because I knew the reality was that most of them don't get heard within a year. And that was something that we got fixed once Mark got, once Mark got elected. But you don't know often with some of these things, these frustrations, you don't know, is it city staff or is it the mayor? And so I, and I think it would be too easy for someone on the, an outsider, as you've dubbed them, to come in, you know, get their shoulders rubbed and feel like they're, you know, things are going in the direction they want them to go. This is your idea. I don't.
And thank you for bringing that up though, because that's another, you asked where we teamed up. The CCR process, when I got in there, I talked, you were one of the first people I talked to about the CCR process. And he says, Mark, I file CCRs and they just never see the light of day. And, and I said, well, that's ridiculous, right?
I have to force them out during the budget.
You know, he's a council member like everybody else. And if you get the signatures, they should be heard and they should be allowed to move through the process. And we teamed up and we did get that.
Do you feel like Mayor Nierenberg's relationship with city manager Eric Walsh was too close?
I don't think it, no, I don't think it could be either.
It, yeah, I, I agree. I don't know that it was too close, but I do know that, for instance, on the fire negotiations, what was happening was it was Ron and, and Eric, and then Andy sort of helped it. And they would talk and then they decided that we weren't going to have these individual meetings or, or sorry, we, we were only going to have individual meetings and not group meetings. And so that's where the whole conflict started, I think, on Project Marvel. To, to bring it back to that, they've been talking about this for over a year. We were only brought in, what, four or five months ago, whenever, whenever it was. So, so I do think, I don't think too close, but I do think that the entire council should be involved in more.
Yeah. Now, not, not to be too prosaic about it, but you've got a $31 million deficit that you're going to have to wipe out in the next couple of months as you craft a new annual budget for the city. And you're going to have a mayor who is pretty clueless about how the budget works, right? So what are you anticipating, like how bloody is this going to be? Or not? I mean, what's going to happen with, with next year's annual budget? And importantly, I want to ask each of you where you're going to go for cuts. Let's start with you, Jalen.
Where I see, I see, I don't see it getting very bloody necessarily. I see city staff coming back sometime in the next, probably on the 26th of June, when we have our, is that the day that we have, we're having our goal setting session?
Last meeting, I think so.
They'll bring, they will have identified some cuts. We'll have a new number to work with, that, a new, a new deficit. And then spend a few months, spend the month of July, you know, at our field offices and then come back in August. And I'm sure they will have identified some more. And I think from there, you know, I would just recommend slowing down the increases that we have. Because there's a lot of, there's, I think there's some need where you can't afford to do something like that, like with ACS. I think we're finally getting them the resources they need. There's other departments that. I'll leave, I'll leave that alone.
Well, let's not leave it entirely alone. When, when you talk about slowing down the rate of growth, what departments are you talking about? Like, what spending areas would you slow down?
So naturally, the departments that grow the fastest are going to be the ones with the most employees. It's going to be the ones with the largest budget. Police has always been the department with the largest, the largest budget. And we're talking about cuts to every other department except them. And not even cuts, we're talking about, you know, we want to add 200, 300 more officers in a single year. Do we need to do that right now? If we, if that's going to be, if this is the department that grows at the fastest rate, that, you know, will never be cut. You can't cut it, you can't defund the police. You can't. Why do we need to grow at such a fast rate right now when we're experiencing a 30 some odd million dollar deficit? When we can't meet the rest of the need? We got, we're going to then be looking at cutting public works, we're going to be looking at cutting infrastructure. And is that conducive to our need? No, are we going to cut library? Are we going to cut ACS? Are we, we're going to start working our way down the, the list until we're cutting the parks budget? I'd say just slow down all, just slow down all the growth. Maybe some of those plans where we've been like, hey, we're going to, I'll, I'll move away from the police plan. We're going to cover all of the park shade structures or cover all the parks with shade structures over two, three, five years, at whatever time. Extend it a little bit, let's see what that looks like. Add 300 officers, let's extend that a little bit out. Let's not do it all this year, let's slow down.
Well, I know Megan knows exactly where I'm going to start. And that's with.
Let me stop you there. Before you get it, define what it is. Know what you're about to say. Tell, tell our listeners what the hell you're talking about.
So, so I'm, I'm really pleased that a couple of weeks ago, we started down our path to a hybrid zero-based budgeting form of budgeting here, here at our city. And what it means is this, because, and I'm glad you asked me that, because there's a lot of confusion. And when I first brought the idea to council, everybody said to me, oh, Mark, you always want to cut spending. I said, well, I do want to cut spending, but this is actually not about cutting spending. It's about finding the waste and duplication and redundancies and the programs that aren't working and moving that money to the citizens' priorities. So every year, just like the councilman said, every department gets, you know, three or 4% more, more money and government grows and grows and grows. And, and that's how it works. Zero-based budgeting would require in its purest form, each department to come before city council, start with zero, right? And then justify each line item expense in the coming year based upon the results that they think they're going to achieve by spending that money, right? Budgeting for results rather than budgeting just to, to spend more money. It's what private businesses do all the time. And so.
So basically now, when you get a budget document, a proposed budget, it's, it's not that. It's like, here's, here's what we spent last year, we want to spend X percent more.
Right. We get it, so the budget document shows, we'll get this in June. It will show where we are in, and I think we. We get it. So the budget document shows, we'll get this in June. It will show where we are. And I think we just got it as well. It'll show us the progress every city, every department, every department has all these programs. They're showing, they're going to show us every program. These are the metrics. This, these are the, are the ones that are doing well. These ones, you know, have been delayed. This is, this is happening. There's already ways to do that. You're going to find it. You will maybe find duplication and service if it's like sending two crews to go do two different tasks, rather than sending one crew to do both tasks. You might see something like that. And how much do you think that really is? I'd be interested in that.
Let me give you an example of the metrics you're talking about. Like when we issue the death certificates, it's like, oh, we issued, you know, this many death certificates in a month. What, what kind of metric is that? That's not a real, that's not a real metric. So to answer your question, we got to do a combination of things. Completely agree with the councilman. We got to slow the spending in some departments. Number two.
I'd say all the departments are going to do it.
Number two, we do need to, we do need to cut some spending. We spend about 25, 26 million dollars on delegate agencies every year. We, we, we've got to start there. This is a ton of money. We've got all these organizations that every year come to the city and they just think it's by right that they're going to get their $500,000 and, and whatever the amount it is, and, and off they go.
User arts, culture, social service, all kinds of numbers.
A, a lot of them, but then we had a business development organization the other, the other year, my first year, Prosper West, right? That was getting, I forgot how much money it was. And we, we had nobody on the board. We had no oversight, nothing. And we found out that they were not using our money properly. So the city manager, to his credit, I think, is now committed to making sure that that process runs better. So it's going to be a combination of cuts and a combination of finding where we have this waste and redundant spending, moving it to the citizens' priorities and get, and get back in line. And we know it can be done. As Eric always tells me, Mark, we can do this because during COVID, right? You were, you were there, right? He said we had.
Right after.
Right after. He said we had to do a bunch of cutting and a, and a big reset. So Eric, Eric and staff know exactly how we need to do it. And so now's a good time.
Well, I do want to just make sure. So it sounds like you're saying though, that you want police and fire to be exempt from this though? You're saying some departments.
I think every department, including them, if we can find redundant or wasteful spending, police and fire included, then it absolutely needs to be cut out. But I do think, I do think this plan to, because we're 200 police officers short, right? Maria said it the other day on the dais during, during public, public safety, Maria, Maria Vigomis, city manager.
Of the plan.
65, 65, and 65 is the plan over the next three years. I've of course, put forth an alternative proposal that I'm hoping you'll support to where.
Imagine.
We find the extra 3.5 million dollars and we do 100 this year and we do 100 next year because public safety is our top priority. But yes, if there's redundant or wasteful spending there, let's nix the redundant and wasteful spending and let's get new officers on the street.
And I know we've been talking about zero based budgeting. Can you remind me, because it's going to be implemented in kind of a small way, not necessarily like true zero based budgeting would be like the whole budget.
It's going to be a hybrid model.
Remind me which departments are.
I knew I should have looked at it before. I know Public Works is one of them. I, I want to say Parks was, was two, but I forget, there's four.
Public Works, Metro Health, Parks. And I wanted to say solid waste, but no, human services.
Okay.
So.
Those are the four we're going to start with. A good four. And look, Public Works, which we can vote. Okay, but here's what we can agree on. Our Public Works department.
That one is.
Absolute disaster.
I would say an absolute disaster.
I'd say it's an absolute disaster and we got to fix it and we got to fix it.
I changed my mind.
Yeah, we, we got to fix Public Works.
Let's take that up a little bit. When you say Public Works is a complete disaster, I don't want to, I don't want to get, and it would be really easy. This is another hour's conversation. Give me the thumbnail sketch of why you think Public Works is a disaster.
Well, I, I think that structurally, it's set up wrong. And I think that city management has now, has now come to that conclusion as well, right? We had a really great guy, Rozzy, heading up Public Works, who, who did a great job and excellent service to the city. But having one person head up that entire department that's responsible for capital projects, maintenance projects, lights, everything is just too much. So I think that what we're going to have moving forward is it's going to be divided up a bit in, in, in different, different heads of different areas. I, I, I think.
Yeah.
So, so number one, you talked about how it's structured, but man, how do I say this tactfully?
I think that's the bulk of it.
But, but it's also, we hire contractors for reasons other than whether they have a good track record of finishing projects on time and on budget. I mean, imagine that. Why don't we hire contractors that we know are going to finish on time and are going to finish on budget and stop a, a, all the rest of the stuff? We had a project in District 10 where the contractor walked off the job three different times during the job. This project should have lasted a few months. It lasted more than six months. That's not fair to my residents who couldn't get out of their driveways on the residential streets, go out. So we've got to hire contractors in a better fashion. We've got to, I think, and we've talked about it a little bit, incentivize the contractors in these contracts, find money to incentivize them to get the projects done in, in a, in a more timely manner.
Is that a way of saying you need fewer small women and minority owned business requirements or no?
Listen, I don't care if the owner of a construction company is male, female, black, white, it doesn't matter to me. I just want contractors who are going to get it done on time and on budget.
But then we have those same conversations at council where we say that small businesses at large are never going to give, given the opportunity to grow. If they're not given preference, you know, like small, local preference, any of those things, it's going to continue to send money out of San Antonio. It's going to continue to benefit these big corporations. I don't know. I feel like there, there's definitely a balance to be struck. There's definitely a balance to be struck. But I think we can do away with a lot of our problems by doing away with low bid, the low bidder.
Yeah. Councilman Mickey Rodriguez, you've got a baby in the works.
Yes.
Baby girl's coming. You got to go. So we need to wrap this up because you've got an OB G Y N appointment to get to. But you're, so you're taking, you're taking some parental leave. Tell us a little bit about that. When does it start?
Yeah, for sure. So it would be from August 1st till about October 1st. Ideally, ideally, I'll be back a little bit sooner than that. But the reality is, is that council is a full time, is a full time, full time, full time job. And during the budget is when it's the worst of it. You have meetings that are at all hours and it's, it's very, it's very involved. And to me, I was balancing two things. One is obviously family or obviously the job for, the job, balancing the job and wanting to make sure that the constituents who just reelected me are represented to the fullest and that they have somebody at every meeting who's advocating for District Two, the same way that I would, and that they're able to cast their vote. It's been very important to me that I don't miss any council meetings and that I'm always there to cast my vote. And I want that to remain the same. But I've also seen people make the mistake of not prioritizing their families. And especially during a big transition like this where my husband is, you know, he only gets four weeks of leave. At some point, I have to be the primary caretaker. And if I'm not there for my family and I'm not a, and my home is a mess and then I'm not a whole person, I can't be a good representative for my constituents. So.
Let me just say, sleep in now when you can. You're about to lose that.
I'm not really a sleeper. I'm not really.
It's Mark White can tell you. You're in for a fun. All right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna end it there. Councilman, thank you very much for joining us and thank you for joining us. If there are any of you left who have not signed up for the Inside Politics newsletter, drop down to show notes, click on it and sign up. Thank you very much and we will be back next week.